Go ahead and call the Willmar City Council work session to order. This is a special work session being held because last week we had a snowstorm. And so, the items on the agenda will be the items that we will be discussing. We will not be able to add any additional items because it is a special meeting. Is there any public comment here from the public that wishes to speak? CNN hearing, none. We will go to the agenda. The first item is IT requirements for the county chambers if we're going to hold county council meetings there. Mr. Dave Hillenbrand.
Mayor and council, Dave Hillenbrand with RAC and the IT department. Before you, you should have a funding request for equipment to be able to present the city council meetings live via cable cast and also streaming capabilities. Currently, the county board meeting room, the building does not have the capabilities of being able to cable cast or stream video from there. So, purchasing these two pieces of equipment from Alpha Video would give us that capability. The cost is approximately $17,000 and it is requested that the council approve the funding request for that equipment.
Mayor, we're not making the request. We just wanted to present the cost to the council. I just want to make that clear. I didn't make the request that we put that before the council. My understanding was that we wanted to determine, you know, an approximate cost to do so and that have IT department present that estimate and answer any questions. So, that's what we wanted to do tonight. So, if there was a misunderstanding, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
But you are prepared to take questions if the council...
Sure, I can do my best, yep.
Certainly. So, are the information coming to us is if that if we want to improve the IT requirements for the county chambers to allow live stream of our council meetings along with having it on RAC 8 would cost approximately $17,000. So, council discussion. Council member Elvarado.
Thank you for coming in and talking to us. My question is, has the county been approached about contributing to this process or program or equipment?
Mr. Elvarado, they have, but they do not have a desire to stream at this time, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Two questions. The first one, if I understand correctly, it's portable. So, it could be taken to the fire station to do a live with that. So, it would be the, belong to the city and would allow for live broadcasts to take place in multiple locations?
Interesting that you bring that up because we were just discussing that beforehand. It says that it's portable and it is in theory. However, it would be mounted permanently, I shouldn't say permanently, but it would be mounted into a rack so that we wouldn't be able to take it from place to place. The system is set up so that it's portable, but because we would only be using it for that purpose of city council, because it isn't, when, once they rack mount it, it would be taking it in and out all the time. So, we would be mounting it so that it's permanent just for that use. Is that, is your question?
I think so.
Okay.
Then the second part of my question is, so if this is just for information, what is the steps to make this happen or what are we doing?
Well, the council, if the council wanted to, the council could move it to the agenda if they chose to. Or if the council wanted to, I mean, the council can do what it wishes at this point. So, if you wanted to move it or if you wanted to have it come back in two weeks, you could do, or, I'm sorry, next week, you could do that. It'd be up to the council what they wanted to do. This is for information gathering is my understanding from what Mr. Holland said. So, we're just presenting the facts.
So, when we talked about moving out there, we assumed that we were going to be able to do this. So, I'm, I mean, I'm just curious because I think the intent is to stay there, so, and people are questioning why it isn't live now. So, I'm just wondering how quickly we are going to get this done.
Staff, my understanding in talking with Mr. Holland last Thursday is that staff's ready to go with it if the council gives the direction. Is that right, Mr. Hillenbrand?
I would agree, yes.
So, they're waiting for council direction. That's what they're waiting for.
I would also just add, and you can, I'm just trying to recall my conversation with Ross, but it, by ordering the equipment and getting it installed and everything, we're still looking at the earliest 90 days. Is that right?
Correct, yep.
Okay. I just want to put that out as well.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for presenting this to us. I assume due diligence has been done, so I'm sure that this is latest, greatest, state-of-the-art technology. Should we permanently mount it out there, the theory that it is portable or whatever, if we have something coming down the road regarding new council chambers or something like that, it would then be able to be possibly implemented? Do you think the technology is going to hang in there long enough to...
I would say yes. I don't know enough about it to say what the upgrades will look like in a few years. But I do know that this is, yes, the latest and greatest. CNT, which is Coon Rapids, uses it in multiple locations for the St. Paul Saints, all kinds of winter sports that they do. And it's been done by multiple production companies with eight different locations without, within the United States at the same time. So, it's definitely a good piece of equipment that will last a long time.
So, within a reasonable amount of time, it could be moved to another facility?
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
Not knowing anything about this technology at all, are there components of these that are, that could be replicated others at a cheaper cost?
Not like this, no.
You'd have to do a $17,000 reinvestment anywhere you'd put...
As a matter of fact, a lot of peg stations go with this piece of equipment because of its affordability and because of its simplistic design.
Okay.
Councilmember Swantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any idea how many people watch live versus on demand? Is there any way of gauging that?
We do not have the capability to find that out, whether it be through cable cast or through streaming. The best way for us to gauge that would be through analytics and watching hits on YouTube. But I can say that when we don't, we know that people are watching, so...
To find that for me a little clearer, when we don't what?
When we don't stream or when we don't cable cast, if council isn't live, we hear it, so, from people that they want to...
And so, how many people are you talking about?
Well, just get, you know, a phone call or two or whatever. Like, can't say that we're flooded with phone calls, but...
Well, not like 200 or 300 or anything?
No.
Okay. Because I've gotten phone calls on this as well, so that's one, but I've gotten very few, so, I'm sorry. Councilmember Swantus.
So, just so I understand, whether we put it out at the county or we would move it, but we can move that same system to a new facility when it is completed. So, it's really just a matter of, it was the same dollar amount, it's just a matter of expending the money now or in...
Correct.
Whenever.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it my understanding that the county doesn't livestream then? Is that what the deal is?
Correct.
They have a delayed broadcast?
They have an individual that records it on a DVD and I don't know if they are submitting them any longer to rack. They were at one time, but I think within the past month or so, they have not.
Is it possible to rent it to them then if they decide to do that?
Essentially, they would need to have employees, if they wanted to do it, they would need employees to run the equipment there and then also at the head end, which would be at rack.
Okay. And the rack mounted equipment is, I mean, how much space does it take and is this small?
Looks like a DVD player.
That's it?
Yep.
So, it is really portable?
One piece of it is, one piece of it's rack mounted. The second piece is a portable piece that will be rack mounted. The portable piece can be attached to a camera, so you could go out into the community, things like that. But because we'd be using it in kind of a lockdown situation here and then at rack, it would be mounted.
Well, I think it's worth waiting till next week, think about it, myself. It's only seven days away.
You know, okay, councilmember Nelson.
So, just clarification, so it was just for information. So, what was the administrator's intent with things of, I mean, some of the things that we've had on the work session are on the agenda next time. Is that what your plan was for, to do, bring it back next?
No, not necessarily. It's up to the council. I mean, the council requested an inquiry as to what the cost would be. So, my assumption would be that there would be a discussion and if there's continuation to install, then we could put that on the agenda. If there's a, basically a consensus that they're not interested, the council is not interested, then it would be dropped.
Well, I personally think it would be a step backwards. I've taken concerns that our work sessions aren't live. So, I have a concern that we kind of keep delaying this with that, but I just don't know why. And I guess maybe we wait a week and let the community speak, because I think there are a lot of people out there frustrated that we aren't live right now. So, we can find out.
Councilmember Swantus followed by Elvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be honest, when I first thought, looked at this and I thought $17,000, if we've got less than, well, now if it's 90 days, like, counting it out, if we had the new city office building built, we've got about 14 meetings left in the year, assuming we'd be in by the beginning of the year, that's over $1,000 a meeting. And I thought that was pretty spiced, or pretty expensive. But if we can move the unit to our new facility, it's really just a matter of spending the money now or later. And I think that to meet the public's expectations of having it live, it just makes sense to move forward with it.
Councilmember Elvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree. I think we should move forward on it. It isn't, at least once a week, somebody won't bump into me and say, "I watch, I watch you on RAC 8." And they're always giving me some sort of feedback about watching our council meetings. So, I believe it's a, would be a positive step to keep moving forward and keep that transparency and openness.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern was if we purchase it and then it has to stay there, but if we need to move it to some other place...
Absolutely not. We will purchase it and then it belongs to us. We would take it back out of there.
I say go for it now because there's a lot of people that want us to be live.
Well, I'm hearing at least four people that are willing to move it forward. Am I hearing that correctly? Is there anybody that's opposed to moving it forward? Is there anybody that's opposed to moving it forward tonight or should we wait? I kind of like the idea that councilmember Christensen said, to give us, I mean, it's only seven days. It's not like it's two weeks. Give us seven days to percolate on it or do you want to move it to the agenda tonight to get it ordered seven days early? What does, councilmember...
Are we even able to move it forward since it's a special meeting?
We can, we can.
I'm fine with waiting till next week because I...
We don't have it on the agenda. I thought, I seen the remote attendance, I thought it was remote access. So, no, we don't have it, so we would not be able to move it forward because it wasn't published.
Okay. Put it on the 19th.
Mr. Scott?
That is technically correct. You're right.
So, yeah, so we are going to have to wait. Thank you for pointing that out. Any other discussion on that issue? Thank you, Dave, for being here. Appreciate it. Appreciate all the work that you're doing. And I really like the new improved website and I like the post you're putting up, so you're doing a great job, so keep it up, so. And we're glad we have you up to 40 hours now, so I hope that's helpful, so.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next, we have the 2018 bond financing update. Am I going straight to Ms. Aho?
Yes.
Ms. Aho?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The administrator asked that I come and give just a brief overview of the financing schedule. You have a lot going on this year. So, the first item I'd like to talk about, and I'm speaking from the memorandum dated February 28th. We did attach some full schedules, but on the back of, on page two of the memorandum, put a little summary of those financing schedules. For any bond financing that you do, the city is required to hold a hearing on an ordinance, publish that ordinance, let some time pass for people to express their opposition if that's how they feel, and then we are able to conduct the sale. So, the summary schedule here has those major events. The first project would be the street improvements. And if we're prepared and able to set a maximum borrowing amount, we would have you set the hearing next week at your council meeting. The hearing then would be conducted roughly a month later in April 16th in anticipation of a sale date on May 14th. And then proceeds from that bond issue would be available in mid-June. Similarly, with the R-22 and Zamboni Room improvements at the Civic Center, the Civic Arena, the same schedule with the setting of the hearing next Monday, conducting that hearing in April, selling the bonds in May, and proceeds available in mid-June. What we would anticipate is that both of those sales would be competitively bid and we'd bid them in separate sales, but both on May 14th and bring those results back to the council that evening. The city hall project, we put together a sample schedule for that anticipating that proceeds would be needed in early September. That hearing would be set on May 12th, so a couple of months from now. Again, the hearing about a month later in the middle of June, sale date in early August, and proceeds available in early September for that project. The next project, the Curling Club facility, if it were able to proceed at this time, and I don't know where you are in terms of being able to set a maximum for that project or if one has been set, you could, again, set that hearing on Monday if you chose to, following the same schedule to have proceeds in mid-June. We did provide an alternate here. I know there's a fundraising effort going on and if the project is delayed, everything shifts out but stays in roughly the same proportion. So, the alternate schedule that's there just for an illustration would have that action to set the hearing in June, July hearing, August sale, and proceeds in mid-September. So, that gives you a sense of the time block that's needed to get from the point where you know how much you would need to borrow to when you could actually get proceeds. The fifth financing is for lift stations and that project appears to be at the point where you would again be able to set the hearing on Monday, conduct the hearing in April. There is no sale date per se. That issue is being placed with the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority and the current schedule has the anticipated closing of that transaction June 1st of this year. So, those are the projects that are in line. If, again, we will need, by March 19th, we will need to know the maximum borrowing amount. We'll be working with staff this week to make sure that we have that information available for you on Monday. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you for that report. What are you seeing, the numbers coming in at now? Have you seen any upward movement on the bonds or not yet?
There, there was some movement upwards since the beginning of the year, but it's still fairly stable market. The volume has picked up. It was down quite low. We were seeing some amazing discounts or underwriting compensation, very low. But now the volume's picking up, so I think those will probably be going back to their previous levels. But the borrowing rates are still quite attractive.
Okay. And then, have you gone out yet and asked what people think our bond rating's going to be and how it's going to be affected with the sale of the hospital?
The...
Well, not the sale, but I mean, the transfer of debt, indebtedness?
We did provide that information to the rating agency and it's probably time for me to be calling them back. They were going to be letting us know when they wanted to be having that discussion. We have been, the rating agencies are required and publish their methodology, rating methodology. And so, what we have been working on using the city's last financial statement is to mimic their evaluation. And so, again, we'll be working with Ike and Steve on that to try to anticipate where their comments and questions might come. I'm assuming now that they would probably wait until that may sail and have the entire discussion at that point in time, including the hospital discussion. But we have put the documents in front of them quite, quite a while ago.
Right. Yeah. Mr. Oakland said, shared that with us, well, I think it was two months ago he shared with us that he had supplied you with the documents. So, I just wondered if there'd been anything yet. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Aho? Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question, so the dates are out there. If we move along, can you stop at some point in time if one of them doesn't work or you decide not to do them?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, the ordinance process permits you to have a bond sale, but it does not require that you have one.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your report. You know, when we, we receive a bond rating, is, do they consider the county and school along with us? I mean, their indebtedness or...
They do.
They do.
Yeah.
So, it's really an area bonding rating.
It is, quite, yes.
So, if the county or school is way, is quite a bit in debt, I mean, that does affect our rating.
That does affect your rating and vice versa. What you do will affect their rating.
Okay. Thank you.
Nothing else from the council, the way it looks. Thank you for driving out. And I don't believe you have anything on the next agenda, so thank you for the long drive and have a great evening. So, it looks like a nice sunny evening for a drive back to the metro. So, thank you so much. Next, we have playground equipment placement. Mr. Brizendine.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, before you is a discussion item, talking about playground equipment.
I don't think your mic's on.
Oh, here we go. I'll start all over again. How's that sound? Mayor Calvin, members of the council, before you is acknowledgement of the playground equipment that, if you recall, was purchased last, early part of this winter. Two units, more than two units were purchased, but two units will be installed at Miller Park and one unit was left for the council to weigh in on where that piece of equipment should be placed. We have had discussions at the Community Ed and Rec Board. We've had discussions as staff. What you're seeing before you is the staff's recommendation that this equipment be installed at Sunrise Park. But there are a number of other parks that have lost equipment due to the age of much of our equipment in the system. So, we're here to try to get a decision from the council so that we can start planning the installation of that equipment along with the Miller Park equipment that, that we have already identified as location where that will be. Company that will be coming out has a little bit of work to do to place this equipment in the right spot in the park. So, we've got a little bit of a time crunch to make a decision, the next few weeks at least, so that they can get to planning and be prepared when the weather breaks to come out and install that, most likely about the mid-May timeframe.
Okay. Counsel? Councilmember Nelson?
This is just a general question because the presentation that took place at Community Ed and Rec Advisory Board meeting was that Public Works had made, Public Works had made this recommendation. And I, we really didn't have a discussion at the advisory board meeting about, I think there were questions as to the location. It's in the minutes, I think, if you read the minutes with that. So, I was hoping to hear from Public Works as to why they chose this park, because I know there are a lot of other areas that have the need. And I think that it will bring up, you know, how we're only doing one, one location other than Miller Park this year. So, I just had a concern about how we reach this one. I understand there's a need there, there's a need in a lot of locations. So, I was hoping to hear from Public Works as to how the staff picked that location, so.
Mr. Christensen, do you wish to make a comment?
Where's the council? Councilmember Nelson, I'm not entirely sure the exact steps or who made the initial recommendation. I know it's just been expressed to me that Sunrise was a park that needed some, some additional equipment. And so, that was the park that was suggested we put this in. I can do some more digging and find out how and when and some timelines, but I think the bottom line is we need to, we would like to get this equipment out there somewhere into a park that is in need, and this is one that's in need.
Follow?
That's it?
Can we follow?
No, there were just a lot of parks and we had a lot of discussions about them. And so, it, you know, the advisory board didn't help to make this decision. It was said that Public Works made the decision. And so, we had a discussion here at the table, I think, a couple of times. I think we could all lobby for a park in our ward or in our city that needs it. So, again, it's important that we get it there. I just was asking for further clarification with how Public Works came up with that recommendation, because that's how it was shared at the Community Ed and Rec Advisory Board meeting.
City Administrator Holland, I just have a question. Don't we have money in this year's budget as well to buy additional park equipment? Mr. Brizendine.
Mayor Calvin, the, there is no further resources in the 2018 budget at this time for playground equipment. It's proposed that another $100,000 be placed in the 2019 on the CIP. But to get to further on councilmember Nelson's questions, in talking to Public Works staff, I've probably talked to them more than Sean has about this issue. Pheasant Run, Sunrise Park seems to be a heavily utilized park. It's got a ball field near it, so there's, there's a lot of usages. And they just recommended that park based upon the equipment that was taken away from there a couple of years ago. And even though there's a new school nearby, it seems to be their recommendation that this, this is a good start. We put units in six parks a year ago. We're planning to put one in Miller along with whatever is chosen for the other park for this year. So, that's upgrades in eight parks besides the Destination Playground. We know we've got 37 parks, so we know that there's more work to be done. But their analysis of where equipment was taken from and what seemed to be pretty utilized, strongly utilized parks, that's where their recommendation came from.
Councilmember Fagerly followed by Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sunrise Park is in my ward and my neighborhood and that park was devastated when they took out the play equipment. We're also proposing in addition to the parking lot at the ball field there. And you got to remember, this is from May through July and it's young kids, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And they bring their families and not, all the little kids like to sit and watch baseball. And they're not going to go across the busy street to go over to Lakeland Elementary School. They can walk up the walking path to this park. And I've requested a couple of different times last year and a couple of times this year that the play equipment needs to be brought into Sunrise Park. I know councilperson Plowman here would like it in Voss Park, but there's a drainage issue there. It was underwater for five weeks last year, so that area needs to be corrected first before we bring in some nice play equipment over there, so I'm for Sunrise Park.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My turn to lobby for my park. No, in all seriousness, I do think it actually makes the most sense to take a look at practicality, usage. That's probably the most important thing. What, what parks are being utilized the most and the ones that are or were being utilized that are being missed the most should probably be addressed first. Question, was College View, was the equipment in College View replaced that you know off the top of your head? the top of your head? Because I know we were missing equipment in College View, Valley Brook, and Voss Park, which was all down County Road Five. But I think maybe there was stuff replaced in College View.
Councilmember Plowman, that is correct. Out of those seven units that we put in six parks a year ago, College View was one of those parks that got equipment. Valley View and Voss are two other ones in that neck of the woods that need some attention as well. We just feel at this point that Sunrise just gets a little more traffic. But if you recall, when we did put the six units, we did try to spread them around town into different wards and different areas of town. So that's what we would continue to do as the resources became available and we were able to purchase further units.
Well, in all fairness, in my opinion, I guess the nice thing about the County Road Five corridor, there is a good trail system there, and so it's good for us to get on our bikes and the kids have fun riding to the park, too. So if that means we got to wait an extra year, I would be okay with Sunrise.
Counselor Mayor Alvarado.
Hey, Mr. Brizendine, I was going to ask, do you have a outline of parks that are going to be getting equipment, or is it the decide-as-you-go kind of thing? What's the methodology of that?
Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Alvarado, yeah, it's just a draw-out-of-the-hat type, no. Public Works does have a game plan, but it hasn't been a published game plan, and I think that's what we need to work on, is the rating system that they use to take equipment out and what parks would be the highest in need, especially if we're going to have these assets replaced in the near future. We should have a game plan that everybody at the table can see and plan accordingly for the future. So that's a job that Sean and I have talked about with Gary and the rest of the team out there, and we just have to get that document in place. And our hope would be, as we look at some potential changes related to whose responsibilities these things are, that will surface to the table as a direction to take in the near future.
Yeah, I think it would be a good plan to give the community the opportunity to see what's going to come forward and get them excited about, you know, their neighborhoods and that sort of thing, so. And I also like Mr. Plowman's idea that explore the parks. We have a lot of them in town, and I remember when my kids were younger, we used to do a lot of exploring, and it's, we've got a great park system. Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky, followed by Osmus.
I'm glad to hear it wasn't out of a hat. I thought it was a dartboard, so appreciate that.
I was thinking twice.
Yeah. My question is, I mean, we've seen this before. We know what was taken out and we know where the. I would agree with Councilmember Nelson that we have to have some kind of a thing put in place of how we're going to replace them. And I thought at a retreat that this council had, we talked about replacing them. We may not have had the plan in place, but we talked about the infusion of dollars in that. And I mean, these that we're talking about here are $2,017. I'm a little discouraged to hear there is no dollars for 2018, when I thought we had talked about putting dollars in specifically for 2018. I'm encouraged that the amount we talked about before is in the 2019, but what happened with 2018 is my question.
Well, Counselmember Mesky, I thought it was in there, too, so I'm responsible. I dropped the ball. That's all I can say.
Go ahead.
I thought I had it put in there, and we'll make sure we get it done.
Mayor Calvin, I'll take you off the hook on that one. That was a, staff did not put it in their original one either, based upon the large-ticket items that were in there. We didn't think that the scoring of it would exceed what needed to take place when it came to refrigeration and some of the other big-ticket items that were in the capital projects for this year. So we thought with the equipment that we got in '17, that, you know, as much as we don't really want to skip '18, it was the prudent thing to do, given the resources available to us and knowing that '19 they would be available.
In light of that, I will say that the pieces that we did at that retreat were to be the priorities of the council, and that was one that the council intentionally added and said that the loss of playground equipment across the city was a priority for this council, and that's why we put in place the way to replace those different parks. So I'm a little discouraged that the council's priorities were taken off and put into the next year, because that is not what we talked about.
And that's why I accept responsibility. Counselormember Osmus.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarado covered part of mine when he went ahead of me. So I was thinking that if we did get approached by citizens, what we could tell them was the replacement schedule and if we had one in place. And just to remind me again, when we talk about these units and if there's $100,000 that's in the budget for 2019, how many parks are we going to be able to cover with that?
Councilmember Osmus, roughly with installation, each unit that we've been purchasing recently is somewhere in the ballpark of $50,000. So about two new units a year, if you want the size units that we have been putting in. But there's a range, you know, should have brought a catalog, you know? I don't think you wanted to have it. There's a range from the Destination Playground, it's a million dollars, to, you know, $10,000 to get a small unit in. Mr. Christensen in the back row actually was looking at the capital list, and he obviously does more homework than I did. He believes there is $100,000 in the budget this year that the mayor put in. I don't think staff did, but I think.
I think I put it in, and I was shocked to hear. Is it in there, Mr. Holland?
That was my understanding. So when he said that we didn't put $100,000 in, I was shocked. I was like, where did that come from? But what I wanted to say, and we'll double-check that, but I'm pretty sure the $100,000 was not removed, Mayor. But a little miscommunication there, but I would just say that, you know, I'm excited about this year and our parks, and I understand we're talking about playground equipment. But this year, what I'm excited about is we're going to have a grand opening at Rice Park and our splash pad. We're going to install tennis courts at Miller Park. We're going to look at building a shelter and new trail improvement at Robins Island, maybe even additional accessories out at Robins Island this year. And so, and then the icing equipment out at the Civic Center. There's a million dollars right there that we're going to spend just this year in our park system, so I'm pretty proud of that. And at the same time, I'm pretty sure that we had $100,000, we said we were going to do in '17 and '18. And so we will, we'll get that money spent. The reason I wanted this brought up was, there was discussion, and I didn't know about the CER group and what discussion, lack of discussion there. But when it was brought to me, I asked the same question, why this particular park and what type of equipment? And I was provided that information, that there had been a discussion between the parks and with Public Works as far as priorities. And so that was why I said I still would like to bring it before the council and so that they understand what we're doing and more of an information thing, because I think, I think we're doing a pretty good job on an annual basis. That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Osmus, did you have a follow-up, or were you good on that?
I'm good.
Anybody else? Shouldn't hearing done? I'm sorry.
Mayor, could I ask one question? Then if that dollar is available in the 2018 budget, where do you want staff to go? We have been purchasing late in the year to take advantage of some sales, but we certainly can start researching what might be available to us. Is there urgency on the council to install that equipment this year or the same type of game plan we've had in the past with taking advantage of some discounts?
I will let the council speak, but what I heard loud and clear at the retreat is the sooner the better. So, Councilmember Mesky.
Well, I would echo that as well, but I mean, maybe give us what you get for a price quote now compared to what we did last year at the end of the year, and we can make a kind of a decision on what's the best bang for the.
I think we can bring back some recommendations and some options.
Counselor Nelson.
I'm really glad I asked the question, because I think it also speaks to the need to have some planning. As much as these big units are important, swings and some other small things are important, too. And I think it comes back to needing that park board to meet and for there to be a plan before we just order equipment and then figure out where it needs to go. Each park should have a plan, and that is, was part of that park plan to begin with. So I think we need to take a step back and engage some of the, whether it's the park board or whether it's, you know, the advisory. I'm not quite sure how that is going to play out, but before we just order, I think we need to be prepared to do that and see how we can leverage those dollars. So I'm not really anxious to have it come back and say, we bought four more units, where are we going to put them? I think we need a better plan than that. And I'm pleased to hear the discussion that went on around the table with, for the understanding of how we're ending up there, and I can support where this one's going. I just think we need a better plan.
How would you propose that plan be carried out?
Well, I think that leads to a different discussion about the park board, and I don't know if you want to have that discussion now. That leads into the changes with Community Ed and Rec, and so maybe that's a discussion that can come back at a different time.
As the mayor, I'm not comfortable with waiting until we hire a Community Ed and Rec Director to make this decision. The council was very clear in the retreat that they wanted our parks, our neighborhood parks, brought back to the level somewhat of what they were before. And, I mean, we can say we want to have a different plan, but unless we get it down and say, this is the plan we're going to follow, personally, I'm not comfortable with waiting until we hire a new Community Ed and Rec Director.
Well, I think the, may I speak? Thank you, Mayor. I think we need the park board to come together and to start to work on this. There is a plan out there, and I think with everything that's on the table right now with Mr. Brizendine's retirement, I don't know that this is something that should be left under Community Ed and Rec at this point in time. It's my understanding that the development of the parks and park projects are going to be back under to the city, and so I think that needs to take place. Who's going to be responsible for that million dollars we're spending this year? Where is that going to fit under our staff to do that, because it's no longer under Community Ed and Rec? So I think the sooner we come to terms with some of those things and have the park board meet, we can come together with a plan to spend that. And yes, we need to spend the $100,000 and have it actually installed. I'm not quite sure, you know, with that. The next steps to take, I'm not sure where we're at with that. A park board would be a good place to start. It's a requirement of the charter, and maybe we need to start over and have a new park board and delegate them to come back with a plan based off of the information that is there, working with Public Works.
With the change of the joint powers, it does open up a new thing of roles and responsibilities. We've talked about this and how is it going to look and how is it going to be implemented? And so what Councilmember Nelson is suggesting, there is not out of the realm of what we need to revisit. And I think that we're talking about some major changes, and so I think that's why she was suggesting maybe this wouldn't be the right time to do it, but to maybe put it on the plate to say, we may want to explore how that works, because we do have a park and rec board that is defined by charter that we were not operating under. And a few years ago, we've sort of said, well, all of those that represent the city will have this extra role as a park board, but it was my understanding that they never met in that capacity. And so if all the, we have changed and we are now making the roles of these bodies different, it may be time to explore what exactly that means for the city of Wilmer and our park and rec board and how it communicates back. That things might be changing, and maybe it's time to look at that.
Okay, I'm trying to move this project forward. So would it be safe to assume that we agree there needs to be additional park equipment purchased? And if that park equipment can be purchased, we can then reconvene this park board that you both have talked about? And then at that point, that park board can make that determination based off the information that they're given from Community Ed and Rec and Public Works? And then we need to decide as a council, does the park board as defined in the charter really become constituted by those serving on the Community Ed and Rec Board under that function? I think those are two separate conversations. But I certainly would be in favor, if the council were in favor of it, of having staff bring those numbers back to us. We can order the equipment, then we can get the park board to the point where the park board says, okay, we're going to get together and make our recommendation. But if we're going to sit and have another meeting followed by another meeting followed by another meeting to decide, you know, I think, I think we'd be doing a disservice to the public. You know, we said it was a priority for us. You heard from your constituents that this was a priority. I've gotten the phone calls. I know Councilmember Fagerly has, because we've talked about it a number of times. You know, the main concern that we heard, Councilmember Fagerly, was the daycare providers at Miller Park, and that's being taken care of. You know, Steve, he took care of that piece. You know, now we're getting to the nuts and bolts of where, why, and when, but I don't want to hold this project back simply because we have a procedural item. I'm going to go to Councilmember Mesky, followed by Councilmember Nelson.
I don't think we should hold it back. We, this, the priority of this council was to do parks and replace that equipment. I think we need to also explore, because it's also, we talked about, do we need all of the parks that we have? What will be the functions of those parks? Can we merge equipment? All that could be done with a park and rec board, but we're sitting here with snow still on the ground. We have a little bit of time, but if we can order that equipment now, I would agree. We'll have the equipment ready to go wherever it is deemed needed. I don't see a reason why we need to hold back on the equipment if we have the dollars to purchase it, because that was our priority. But we need to talk about how that process is going to work afterwards.
Counselor Nelson.
So just keeping with the spirit of the agenda, we were being asked today to find a part, a home for the piece of equipment that we purchased. And so there's a lot of things that I think go into that next piece. And before we spend $100,000 and then now have to decide which parks to go into, I think we should look at the parks and make a priority of, these parks need equipment, and then order it. And I don't see that that's a serious, long-term, needs-to-take-six-month kind of process. But I do think that the park board should be engaged in looking at what's there to do this. And so I, the reason I was hesitating tonight is because what's on our agenda tonight is this one piece of equipment. And so I think there's more homework to do on the steps that need to take place next, and we haven't done that yet.
And what I'll, what I'll just say is what I hear regularly when I meet with staff. You tell us you want us to do something, we go out and do it, and then you come back and tell us you want us to do something else. So I'm trying to define the process before we go into the process, so that staff doesn't spin their wheels, go down one line thinking that they're doing what the council asked them to do, simply to come back to the council and being told, no, that's not what we wanted you to do, we actually wanted this. So what I'm trying to do is solidify, Councilmember Nelson, what you had asked was, you want a process. I'm trying to identify what that process is so that we don't have staff spin their wheels unnecessarily. If nobody else feels that way, I'm ready to move on. But I think we really need to pin this down, because otherwise, we're going to be in the same position in six months. And we have plenty examples of that, of how we've thought something was going to take a month and it took six. So, I mean, I'm not sure where we're at on it, but again, I want to stay focused on the issue. I believe we're within the contents of the agenda in that we're talking about playground equipment, which the discussion opened up to process. The process then allowed us to have the discussion. Mr. Scott, if I'm off-base, you need to let me know, but my understanding of the open meeting law is if the item is brought up, discussion leads you to that direction, you have the ability to have the conversation. Is that not correct?
Yeah, you're fine. You have on your agenda, you'd be discussing playground equipment placement. This is all germane to that.
Counselor Nelson.
I'm, I'm sorry if, I'm very supportive of getting playground equipment this year. However, I'm still struggling to understand the Community Ed and Rec contract and what pieces are going to end up where within the city. So I'm comfortable with making this decision and waiting a week to come back and asking for clarification with what that process will be. I'm not comfortable right now perhaps leaving it in the same location that it was, because we haven't done it there. So I'm simply asking for an understanding of, is this a city responsibility now? And if it is, how are we going to do it? And we can order four more pieces and, or two more pieces and spend the $100,000, but maybe we can order six pieces that can go in what parks? And so I just think we need a process in place before we spend that $100,000, so we aren't coming back and saying, what park are we going to put it in? aren't coming back and saying, "What park are we going to put it in?" So I'm comfortable with the motion that you want to have take place tonight, if that will bring it forward, but as we said before, it's one week till our next meeting. I think there's more information that needs to take place before we spend the $100,000.
Mayor?
Mayor? I would just like to say one thing, um, that, you know, we talk about placement and where this is supposed to go. I mean, I brought this forward, um, but to all of your points, we've had this discussion before. We took equipment out. We want it replaced with new stuff. It doesn't take a, a, a board or four or five people to talk about that. We took some swings out. We need some new swings. We took this, you know, a slide out. We need to do that. And that's my intention. This just happened to be a $25,000 piece of equipment. It's kind of a multi, you know, play type of thing, and so I thought I was doing, I didn't mean to stir the pot. I was just asking the question between the two parks. But our intention is, we have that list of, we did that, we compiled that last year of, uh, uh, Mr. Brizendine did that. He compiled a list of everything that was taken out, when it was taken out, why it was taken out. We had a couple people certified last year so that they can go through the playground equipment, and they can analyze which pieces of equipment are no longer, you know, uh, safe for children to play on. So we're going to continue to do that. Um, you know, one of the things, again, I don't want to get us off track, but, you know, I like theming parks, and eventually, you know, my ninja, we're going to have American Ninja Warrior, you know, park here one day, uh, here in Wilmer. And, but we'll, we'll do that later on down the road, but right now, our focus is just to simply replace the swings and the slides. And, and, and I agree with Councilmember Nelson. If we want to revive the park board, uh, in, in, under our charter, then we can do that. But most park boards give recommendations. They do not execute plans or, uh, have any authority to do so, but they can make recommendations certainly and get into other things like that. But tonight, I'm just asking for the choice between a couple of parks, and I would make the recommendation, we move forward, make that decision, and, uh, we'll double check on the financing, uh, on some of the replacement there that we have this year in the budget. Thank you.
So Council, where we're at is that there's a recommendation to move the playground equipment and install it at Sunrise Park. There was consensus on that. Uh, then we had a lengthy discussion as far as process. Um, as long as staff understands the process we're all talking about, um, to me, it's clear as mud, but if it's clear to staff, that's all that counts. And, um, we just move the process forward. Is there any objection to that? Okay.
For tonight?
There is a quest, there's a question to move that forward to tonight. Are we okay with doing that for tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
I'm fine with moving this forward. I think the conversation about the process, we're not done with, and I think we need to do that again, but I'm comfortable moving this, this forward tonight.
Next item on the agenda is zoning violation summary. Ms. Anderson?
So the council, um, it was brought to our attention that, uh, there was a request to present zoning violation summary. So we compiled just a, a brief summary of what's happened these first couple of months in 2018 here. It is in the packet. Um, it's just a one-page quick outline of what's happened. Um, we've had 83 properties that have been issued violations, uh, this year. Of those, 53 have included an unlicensed vehicle violation. Forty-four have included a garbage violation. Eighteen have included a furniture or appliance violation, and 12 have included a parking violation. Um, of those 83 properties, 13 have been sent to the police department for citations. I didn't break down which of those were actually ticketed. Occasionally, there'll be situations where the, the property be cleaned up or back, it'll be, um, in compliance by the time the police get there, and those, those properties aren't issued a, a ticket then. The, the numbers there will add up to greater than 83. Some properties have more than one violation.
Okay. Council? Councilor Mesky?
Thank you. I, I was one of those folks that met with her and talked about this, and, um, I had a couple complaints that were given to me from members and residents of my ward, so I thought I'd bring it out there. And for those complaints specifically, it was about parking violations, and so I thought it would be nice, although it's not nice to see how many people are violating those things, but I thought it would be nice for the public to know what some of those items are that you can be, uh, given citations for. In particular, for me, it was for parking because I had heard about parking as an issue and photographs of other things, and, and I can see them, they're all listed here, but I don't know if you maybe want to just summarize what are, what the parking violations can be and maybe some of those other general kind of things?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, the biggest contender I'll talk about first is those unlicensed vehicles. Um, anything that has expired tabs, um, that's being stored outside of a garage or outside of a 75% opacity screen or fence. Anything that, so anything with expired tabs or no license plate, um, those are in violation. Garbage, anything visible, uh, from the public right-of-way or adjacent properties, um, bags of garbage, other debris and rubbish and junk that's laying out in the yard. Furniture appliances, anything that's meant to be indoors. So upholstered furniture, um, would be that, that furniture violation. Appliances, TVs, refrigerators, um, those sort of things that sit outside. Mattresses, mattresses are big too. Parking violations, parking anything directly in, in the front yard of a house, so anything in that, uh, between the street and the front of a house. Four or more vehicles on a property that are outside at a time, um, or anything less than five feet from a property line.
If I missed this, I apologize, but, so there were 83 properties that were given violation notices, but 13 received citations. So does that mean the other 70 dealt with the issues?
Correct. Yep, they're given seven days to comply. Um, so we'll, we'll issue the notice to them. They get a yellow slip of paper. Um, and then we also mail, um, a copy of that along with a couple, a, a letter to the property owner occasionally. When we have a rental situation, the person living in the house and the owner of the property might be different. Ultimately, it's the, the property owner's responsibility if it does get to the police department and a, and a citation is issued. But the, but the other 70 did take care of the issues within those seven days. We mark them as done, and we, we keep track of that date and then move on.
And there is an online way to submit a, a concern? Is that correct?
Um, I think you can use the, um, the website to inquire if you have a question. A lot of times, we get, um, just calls to the department, to planning and development there, um, at the city, um, when someone has an issue or wants to submit a complaint. Occasionally, emails will come across my desk as well, but more than, more than often, it's the phone calls.
Okay. And the identity of the person who calls is?
Completely confidential.
Confidential?
Yep.
Because I've taken concerns that people are, because we're a complaint-based community per se, that people are reluctant to complain about their neighbor.
Yep.
So do we do anything else to, as far as preventative? Does Public Works or someone do anything else as preventative if, if those violations are there or only if somebody complains?
Um, we do, we'll address any of the complaints right away. Um, when, we usually go out, planning and development usually goes out about once a week at least, um, and does a couple drives-through, drive-throughs of a couple streets. We see a lot of the violations happen on rental properties, um, so we do tend to monitor those a little bit closer than some of the owner-occupied neighborhoods, but we still will drive through and make sure we cover the entire city, uh, as best we can. It's large, and you, you can hit a lot of violations in a day, so we take on as much as we can in a day, and we'll address the complaints as well on top of that.
Councilmember Alvarado?
So I just want to repeat my understanding. So if there is a concern, uh, they can reach out to you via the, the phone.
Absolutely.
Call your office, or occasionally you get an email, and, um, anybody that's calling in that concern, um, they're anonymous per se, or it's confidential?
Yep, that's correct. Um, anyone who calls in is confidential, and the people that are being issued the citations, that's also confidential.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Mesky?
Just before we're done, I just want to personally thank you for the prompt reply and, um, doing with this the way I think it should be dealt with, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your report, very thorough. Thank you. Next, we have the armory in Gorton Avenue lift stations. Mr. Christensen?
Members of the council, um, my tablet chose now to die, so as it reboots, basically what this is, is, uh, allowing the council, oh, here we go. So as you're well aware, we're replacing actually three lift stations this year. Um, this is two of them that we've been running together the entire time. In front of you is asking you to authorize us to apply for PFA funding, and I asked Kathy to, to stay if, if you have any questions specifically about the, that process, but basically this says, "Allow us to apply and, uh, receive funds from PFA," and I think it also has the intent to reimburse included in this, which is also part of the 429 state statute.
Okay. Council questions? And that will come, uh, before us in a public hearing, uh, as outlined by Ms. Aho's presentation?
Correct. Correct.
So we had our agenda for next, next month, next week. Okay, thank you. Next, we have remote meeting attendance policy. Mr. Scott, our city attorney.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is coming back to you after a discussion we had, I believe, last month, uh, about an option under the open meeting law for members of the council to attend meetings remotely by interactive television. Typically, that means Skype, although I'm sure there are other programs that would work. I won't reiterate everything we talked about. The first page of your policy essentially just restates the requirements to attend a meeting remotely that are under statute. Um, we summarized those before. The purpose for this, coming back to you now, is direction from the council during our last discussion, uh, in which I think the council was interested in imposing some limitations on this process that would not be, uh, strictly found in the statute itself. So I'll just direct your attention to the last two bullets on the second page of the draft policy. In addition to satisfying all of the statutory requirements to, uh, attend a meeting remotely, the council, I believe, if I captured this correctly, uh, wanted to make it clear that attending remotely was to be some, was to be something done, uh, only in extreme or unusual, atypical circumstances. It's not something where, you know, council members wouldn't have to come to meetings anymore. It would be for unusual circumstances where you're just not able due to, uh, travel commitments or, uh, health conditions or some sort of other extraordinary circumstance that would prevent you from physically intending at the regular meeting location. So that's the first bullet point, there are limitations. Uh, the second bullet point is that a majority of the council should always be physically present at your regular meeting location. This, uh, process was not, I think, envisioned to be something where, uh, a majority of the council would be in any location but your normal meeting location, so this, uh, I, I, again, I hope captures what the council was, uh, wanting to, uh, include in this, in this policy. So I'm happy to take any questions about this, and if anyone feels that this doesn't quite capture what the council wanted, I'm open to that too.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. The only question I had was, just thinking about the timing of it, was to, um, the notification of, uh, at least one regular meeting in advance, and I just wondered, as it compared to if there was a special meeting, do you think we actually would need two weeks, or does that come from somewhere else, or could it be a week, or?
Um, no, I think that was, uh, probably aspirational. It's in order to make sure that you're able to satisfy the notice requirements for any meeting where you're going to have a member attending remotely, you do need to post notice and make it clear in your notice that there's going to be someone attending by remote attendance. If you, if any member who wished to do that was able to do that one regular meeting in advance, there's absolutely no concerns that the notice could be, um, that the notice requirement would be satisfied. I'm sure, uh, there are circumstances where it could be, uh, accommodated on lesser notice than that. So that was a suggestion just for best practice, I guess, for the council.
Yeah, I, I just, thinking of the practical use of it about, um, you know, if you're, two weeks is a long time if something comes up, you know, um, from that standpoint, so that's why I just was curious.
We, we could certainly probably, uh, change that to one week in advance. That should still give staff enough time, I would think, to satisfy any notice requirements. Um, so when we bring this back for formal approval, I could certainly make that change if that's something the council wants.
I'm curious what other people think about it, so.
Councilmember Nelson has asked what other people think about leaving it the way it is, uh, that if you, if it's possible, let, let staff know two weeks ahead, uh, or are council members feeling it's okay to just, uh, change it to one week, or, um, Councilmember Osmus, I'm sorry, Councilmember Schwantis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think if someone's going on vacation, two weeks is perfectly fine, but if there is one of those emergency situations, you can't foresee that far in advance, so I would like to see it reference something to the effect it's desirable to give notice at the prior meeting, but, and then whatever that minimum is that we need to be able to post it and, and, um, notice it properly, just for those situations that do come up that we can't avoid.
Anybody, Councilmember Plom, having trouble here tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I appreciate, uh, Ms. Nelson, uh, uh, offering the question, um, because that's what I was going to ask too, is just about timeline, because specifically for myself and work, I have a busy travel schedule coming up for, uh, for work, and sometimes these things pop up four days ahead of time, and I would really like to be able to give advanced notice, but sometimes I just don't have that opportunity. I wouldn't consider that an emergency, but it's something that I just cannot, um, I can't compromise my family's income for that, so as long as there is wiggle room in there to, to meet the necessary legal requirements, then I would be fine with that.
Can we incorporate that? That's not a significant change?
I can, I can certainly make that change. Yep.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So let me get this straight. I can take my tablet with me and, um, in Iowa someplace, I can't make the meeting. I can use this, but it has to be in a public place, like a hotel lobby or a hotel room, or, or can it be in my cousin's, uh, living room, or?
Uh, the place just has to be made available to anyone from the public who wants to come and observe you attend your meeting remotely. So if you're at a, uh, private residence or something, it's fine, but you have to make sure that, uh, you're not...
Public's welcome.
Allowing anyone to come observe.
Hang a sign on the door, or what? I mean, is this the means?
Yeah, I think you would do something like that.
Someone in Des Moines isn't really interested in Wilmer, but I mean...
Right.
So that, that's allowable?
To meet the strict, uh, language of the statute, that, yeah, it's allowable, but...
Okay. And what, what if you're at home and you're, you've got the flu and you want to attend a meeting? Can you, is that allowable too?
It's allowable.
As long as you hang a sign on your door?
It's allowable as long as you, uh, hang a sign and make sure that you're not excluding anyone who wants to come observe you attend the meeting remotely.
Okay.
As likely or unlikely as that might be.
Thanks, Robert.
Councilmember Mesky?
I like this policy. I just have one question. Is interactive television the terminology they use to describe any of this meeting?
That's the statutory term of art, yes.
Okay. That encompasses all digital and other formats as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
In my profession, that's an analog system that's archaic, but...
As long as it displays an image and audio.
Okay.
Councilmember Nelson?
I just was thinking, I don't even know if this computer has the capability, but it has to, you have to be able to, um, visualize, I mean, both ways, correct?
Correct.
So the policy, but implementing it might be, takes... So, the policy, but implementing it might take more steps for us with the equipment and those types of things.
Yeah, and I should add, one of the reasons we had suggested this one meeting cycle advanced notice was, part one should just be satisfying the notice requirements. The second part would be making sure you're set up logistically, technologically, to do it. And I don't know, honestly, how much work or lead time staff would need to do that. So, we will, as already directed, I think, by the council, tweak that language to make sure it's, I guess, more accommodating for last-minute requests, but still stating the goal to give advanced notice.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind the council that when we talked about this originally, the intent was it would truly be an exception, not a rule.
Yep.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Okay, I was just wondering, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering now, would this person being remotely accessed, would they be part of the quorum? And if, let's say they had a technical difficulty and they couldn't get online, for whatever reason, the meeting would not be held? Is that correct?
If the quorum were dependent on the person attending remotely being included in the quorum, and there was some technological problem that prevented the link from being established, I think that would defeat the quorum. But if it works properly, yes, the member attending remotely is considered to be in attendance for quorum purposes, may vote, may participate in discussion, just as if they were present in the meeting room location.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Councilmember Nelson.
I just wanted to comment, the hospital board has used this and the technology. I mean, you can see that person, they can see the things that are being displayed. It actually has worked very nicely. The conversation is very clear, both ways with that. And so, it certainly isn't meant to be an exception, but I think that that technology is there and it can work, can work.
Okay, at the, last time this was brought up, our IT people told us that we could not do that in this room. And subsequent to that, I did go and meet with Mr. Heron, with Municipal Utilities, and they've done it numerous times in this room. So, again, like I had mentioned at that meeting, you know, make sure that staff talks with, you know, Municipal Utility staff, because they've done it numerous times. And so, our staff was saying it can't be done, but it can be, because they've already done it here. So, we just need to double-check with John and his staff to make sure that we find out how that can be done. And they've said that that's happened numerous times. So, I think they had a member that was on vacation in Arizona, I think, that missed a few meetings, I think, is what they'd said.
We had somebody from Mexico.
Mexico?
Yeah. But then you had to watch him sit on the beach, wasn't as cool, but they did join us from Mexico.
Oh, so you were there when it happened?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
But it was intermittent. I mean, they would, it'd come in and come out.
It was delayed.
Reboot a couple of times. But it worked.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, Chief Hanson, I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, but you only have 15 minutes, so. So, I'm sorry, hold on just a second. There's a request to move this forward to the council meeting tonight. Is there a desire to do that or not?
I...
Why not?
I think we had a few things that need to be clarified, so...
Yeah, I'd recommend, Mayor, that I just make the change that council's directed and bring it back in a week for formal approval.
Okay, that works for me. Chief Hanson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I stand before you tonight, presenting the 2017 annual report to the Wilmer Fire Department. So, you can see just on the first slide here that the fire department was established in 1879. We'll go through just a quick about the history and what we're about. We respond to several different types of calls. We categorize them in either a full department call, a battalion call, or weather watch call, our typical three calls. Weather watch, obviously, is when it's bad weather out and we're looking for tornadoes and all that good stuff. Battalion calls are strictly just car fires, car accidents, where we don't need 40 firefighters there. So, we don't necessarily require everybody to show up for those. And then, the full department calls are any other call, where we would like to have as many of the 40 firefighters as possible. So, then we also have special team call-outs, where we also, we have a hazardous materials team and a technical rescue team. And this is our lovely full-time staff. We have three full-time people, myself, maintenance person, Mark Thompson, and my administrative assistant, Alexandra Peterson. As you know, since 2000, Wilmer's had a full-time fire chief, fire marshal, report to the city administrator. Here are some of the duties that the fire marshal and fire chief do. Mainly, it's the daily operations of the fire department, and then try to fit the rest of this stuff in as well. Myself, I've been the fire chief, fire marshal for two and a half years, but have been in the field of fire service for over, actually, 24 years now. History of the fire chiefs, in Wilmer, we've had approximately 52 fire chiefs over the years since 1879 up to present. Some have repeated. And our longest fire chief was here for 12 years, and our first full-time chief. Here is our administrative structure of the department, with Assistant Chief Jeff Gilbertson, Deputy Chief of Operations, Gailen Clostra, Battalion Chief Training, Josh McGilvery, Battalion Chief of Public Ed, Jim Larson. Our three captains, Howard Carlson, Mark Thompson, and Craig Wasek, along with lieutenants Travis Blashko, Bob Stone, and John Anderson. This is our years of service. Our top one, which is Jeff Gilbertson, with 31 years. And then, now we have two newer firefighters that you met. They have about three months on right now. So, our average years of service right now are just under nine years. In 2017, we did have two resignations, one by Aaron Garcia, who moved to New London, actually went to the Spicer Fire Department after 11 years here. And then, Patrick Bierman was on for a couple of months and did not have the time to commit. So, a couple, a couple of things here that I'm pretty proud of is our community education, our community events. You can see these here, but the two main ones that we're really proud of are the American Red Cross smoke alarm campaign. We installed over 300 smoke alarms within our service area, free of charge. And we took one full Saturday and then a Thursday night and did that. And then, we, once again, we were doing that this year as well, April 7th. We will be spending the Saturday hoping to install just as many or more smoke alarms in the area. And then, our storytime at the fire station, that's been going on for 11 years. And we had the biggest attendants ever this year, over 1,000 people. If you were there, it was a really, was an excellent night, perfect weather for it. Everything worked out well. So, besides these major events, we conduct tours throughout the year, and just informal tours where people just pop in and want to show their kids, or grandkids, or themselves, the fire trucks. They say they want to show their grandkids, but it's really for them. When they bring in a three-month-old, he wants to see the fire trucks. Okay, you want to see them. That's okay, though. That's good. Our outdoor message center, we put on messages for the community, for nonprofit organizations, just to notify of what's going on in our city. We are looking at possibly updating this in the very near future. This has been up there for quite a long time, I'm going to guess 2005-ish, maybe, right in that area. So, it's time to upgrade and have a little bit more area. So, we're looking at that as well. Our apparatus that we're very proud of, they're very well taken care of, ranges from a 1988 pumper to our newest 2017 grass rig. And then, here's some support vehicles as well. We also house a technical rescue trailer, as well as a hazmat trailer. We did house a state decontamination trailer till about six months ago, but that was turned over to the Minneapolis Fire Department. Just some, just a review quickly of hours of service of our vehicles. This is throughout the year. Also, pre-plans, we do pre-plan buildings. We go into buildings at least once a month, a group of people, a group of firefighters do, just to make sure that they know the outlay of the building, if there's any special needs of that business, know how to enter at night, or when it's not occupied. And here that we did 11 of them in 2017. We are scheduled to do about 15 or 16 this year. So, a group of firefighters go in, get the information, and then they bring it back to the fire department, present it to the whole department at our business meetings. You'll see firefighter training, we put in over, just about 4,200 hours of training in 2017 amongst the 40 firefighters. That's both in-house training and out-of-town training as well. So, it's a big commitment just on the training part of it. Attendance requirements, the firefighters and the officers are required to attend 45% of full department fire calls and 70% of training. And you'll see on the bottom, just an average of each of the three companies and the chief officers. Just real quick annual statistics, last year in 2017, we had 305 calls. Average response time from where our pager goes off to arriving at the scene is just over eight minutes. Our average response time from pager going off to first truck leaving the fire station was between five and a half and six minutes. So, it's pretty quick. We used 190,000 gallons of water. Firefighting hours for all of the fire calls, just about 6,000 hours. And estimated dollar loss last year was just about $384,000. This is our response area. We have a response area of about 43 square miles. We cover the entire city of Wilmer, the entire Wilmer Township area, six sections of Doverie Township, and then the airport, as well as wastewater treatment and the brush site. Here's just some, brief summary of some township calls. We also provide mutual aid and receive mutual aid from all the departments in the county and around the surrounding areas. We do give mutual aid frequently. And if you look and, or if you see here mainly large building fires, where they need help, we will respond for that. Also, the flammable liquid spills, or the combustible liquid spills, are all hazardous material stuff, where they requested our hazardous materials team throughout the county. So, responded for that as well. And we did receive mutual aid twice last year for a mobile home fire, and then a fire in a garage. Just kind of a breakdown of the alarm calls. You'll see that 112 calls were false alarms. It could be smoke in a building, or somebody pulling an alarm station, or cooking, you know, burned food, something like that. There's some, just more of a breakdown of the calls in 17. And breakdown by month, you'll notice that we had 35 calls in March last year, and that is, was our top month. But they were pretty well broken down. We did have more than two calls, though, in December. So, it was about 24 calls in December. And then, by day, Monday and Fridays typically, last year, were the high days, with Thursday and Saturday followed right behind them. And that is it. Do you have any, I stand for questions?
Councilmember, any questions?
Yeah.
Chief, on the message board, who do you call, city or the fire department?
The fire department. You can call, or you can go on the website as well, and there's a form to fill out that's available.
And then, mutual aid, how do you know who to call? If you're south of town, you call Blumpkus, or...
Yeah, pretty much. It's kind of what area, town that you're on, and then what you, what else you need. Now that Spicer has a ladder truck also, so if we need a third ladder truck in town for some reason, we would call Spicer, you know, so.
Thanks.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I was going to ask you about the logo. What's the significance of the logo? It's got like three American flags, three fires. What's, is there a story? Is it...
Well, back in 2003, we were looking at changing uniform colors. Everybody at that time wore white. In traditional fire service, firefighters and line officers wear blue, and the chief officers wear white. So, when we were going to change that, we decided to look at changing the patch or the logo. So, we put a committee together, and the flags signify the flags of honor. And the three fires or three flames signify the three companies that the department is divided up into.
Okay. Can I have some follow-up here? Give me one. I was going to ask you about the rank and file. Are they, is there different levels in there, ranks? I don't know what you would call them, or...
It was obviously started with myself being on top, but then the assistant chief goes all the way down through the chiefs, the captains, and then the lieutenants, and then to the firefighters.
But I mean, in the firefighter group?
In the firefighter group is by seniority. That's kind of how we divide them out.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Hanson, I just want to thank you, and also all of our paid-on-call firefighters for the work that you do. I don't know how many of us would want to be in your shoes. We'd be running the other direction while you're running forward. So, thank you to you and to your whole staff and everyone that protects our city. The question I have is, what is a good intent call? Is that what it sounds like? People call to say, "Great job"?
Well, it's more of, they see, they think they see smoke coming out of a house, and it's the dryer vent, the steam coming from the dryer vent. They have good intentions of calling and doing the right thing. It's just, it wasn't what they thought it was.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado, follow-up by Nelson.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm learning here, praying, so just bear with me. Now, your battalions and weather teams, how many, like, how many firefighters are in a battalion?
We used to divide it in half, and we don't do that anymore. We just, everybody just knows that if it's a battalion call and they can't make it, that it's something where we don't need 40 people. We can probably do it with 10 or 15. So, it's not quite as big of a deal. So, if they're working and they can't leave work, they don't have to sit and try to find someone to come and cover for them, or anything like that. So, and that's the same with the weather watch. We say, "Weather watch, yes, we're here for the community, but you also have to watch out for your family. So, if you can't leave your family for some reason, we understand that, and we'll make sure we have enough people for that."
I was going to ask about what, what do you see as greatest challenges for your department now and going forward?
Our greatest challenge right now is recruitment and retention. And it has been that way in the volunteer fire service and fire service in general for years. We're extremely lucky, I think, if we can get somebody and have them stay for five years. In the past, it was totally normal to have someone there for 25, 30 years. And now, it's just people move on. They stay at one job for five years, or stay in one community for four or five years, and they move on. We've had people, I've hired people, and they've quit within three months, because they don't understand the time commitment. So, that's our biggest challenge right now. So, we have, right now, we have less, we have more than half the department is... So we have, right now, we have less, we have more than half the department is under five years of experience.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Shawn, thank you for your report, and I just wanted to ask, on our agenda for last Monday, there was a presentation of emergency management director that was going to be given to you.
Yes.
It's not on this.
No, they, they could not come out tonight.
So we will hear, be hearing about that another time?
Yes, in April.
Okay. I just wanted to say congratulations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Hanson, of course, you know, I'm going to have a few questions for you. A few years ago, you increased your number of firefighters from what it had been previously.
Yes.
So what's the average number of firefighters on each call now? I didn't see that in the report.
We average about 25 per call, right in that area. If we have a, an actual structure fire, then I would tend to believe that we get probably 35 out of the 40. Alarm calls at 2:00 in the morning, we get 25. So we, we do okay.
And then how many of those get on the truck and how many of those are just staying at the station?
I'd say it's probably half and half right now. We try to limit our trucks going out because we don't want the wear and tear on the truck or the risk of the accident, but we also make sure that we provide enough equipment at scene to do the job. So it depends on the call.
And then last year, the city's ISO rating decreased from a three to a four. Has there been any, I mean, I, I've gotten a few phone calls on it, and I think it's probably just because I used to be the fire chief. So people were calling me, asking me, you know, what does this mean to us? And then I did have a couple of calls from a few citizens that, you know, they had called their insurance company and said, why did my rates go up? And they said it was because the ISO changed. So I was under the impression that on a single-family home, the rates really didn't change, but have they done something different with that? So, because the, two of the calls that I received were from property owners, you know, all they had was a home, and they said that their rates had went up. So were you seeing anything?
Yeah, ISO actually changed their evaluation techniques. So we, we were fine, but because of, of the township stuff, lack of different things out in the townships, now they evaluate our service area together, and that's what caused us to change ratings. I've attended a few classes and hopefully we're going to maybe try to get them to come back out in the next year or so to see if they can re-rate us.
Okay. So what I heard you say is that we're being held down on our ISO rating because of our townships. And we cover six sections of Doverie, I think you said, right?
That's correct.
And then we cover all of Wilmer Township.
Yes.
And if we take a look at the total dollars that we receive from those two townships, it's not very much money.
That's correct.
And so if our citizens took a substantial hit based on the fact that we're covering those townships, maybe that's something that should come back to the council for another discussion.
We can, and you also have to realize, and you know this, that some of, you know, not a lot of insur, there's probably half and half on the insurance companies use, use the ISO rating. You know, other insurance companies don't, they have a different rating system. So it depends on what insurance company you have too.
Okay. And generally, the farm mutables don't use the ISO.
That's correct.
Okay. Of course, I always have to give my plug for paid-on-call fire departments. We are the best, that's the best bang in the buck for the buck folks. If you were not to have a paid-on-call fire department, it would cost about $56,000 per firefighter that you needed, and it doesn't take very much math and figuring to realize that you guys do a great job. We have a great service, as councilmember Nelson said. And so thank you for the work you do, thank you to the firefighters, thank you for the commitments that their families make and the sacrifices they make. So keep up the good work, we're proud of you, and hold your head high.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great day.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned. Man, that one's loud. Just a new banger here.